Online. Which is about sixty minutes. Um, and that station probably level, um, about a day that goes. But, um, also each child will have a folder as some. Throw some tools here. Choose two. Well. Oh, but the program itself does lend itself to having math talks. Part of what how we teach math. Take a problem that you know allows you to break it down whole class. Everybody. Five, six, seven, eight. Problems.
I would like to add something. The champions, when we went to the first event for the kickoff with all of the other districts that are doing this, it's a very competitive grant. You had said to me, both Pam and Amy had said to me, if we're going to do this, we need to do it right. Our teachers have been asked to take on a lot over the last couple of years, and they've really risen to the challenge. So what they said was, we have to make sure that they have everything they need. And so this summer, and you can talk to Robin about this more, I can tell you, it became a production facility over at Park Ave. I mean, there was laminators and just pages and pages in cutting out, and we had students that actually did community service to get some of it done. But we got, for grades two through four, we got orange folders, which were calling the toolkit for ST math, all made up for every single student. And the yellow folders are for K to one, because their toolkit is just a little bit different. And so it was a huge undertaking, but when the teachers came in and we announced this grant, we handed them all of their supplies. So there's no heavy lifting, other than learning the program and getting it up and running in the rotations. Oh, and the person who did this, Lauren Galati, she deserves a lot of kudos. I just took pictures. She did all the work.
Any other questions or comments from the members? You kind of answered the question I had, which I know there's been a lot of new change, needed change regarding curriculum, both in, in read, reading and math. And my question, you kind of answered it, was how easy is it to integrate what appears to be a new way of learning into the recent changes in math programs that we have purchased? Is that going to be a challenge for each teacher?
So you probably want to hear from both of us, from, you guys want to start?
Well, I think that, um, the, the program itself is meant for students to do during their rotation. So they get to go in a small group, they're working all on their own, so it's really not teacher-driven, and that aspect. And we talk about it, and we talk about the days, and we talk about stuff, but then they're on their own. So it's pretty easy in that way that often people get it from.
Meaning each individual student?
Each individual student has their own account. And we do it during math rotation. So like one, that, and it's our. Well, I think like in second grade, we're envisioning, yeah, station time, yeah, twenty, own book. And however, we also have. And now ST, so get bored with the same thing. That, so be like maybe be math, ready to have, and get a little. Well, we have.
And, and you know I love surveys, right? I, I send surveys out to the teachers all the time. I hope they feel.
Yeah, we get complaints, by the way.
So, um, so we ask them, because we piloted, I read the instruction last year, and there were some complaints with it. It worked in some cases, in other cases, there were some complaints. So I sent out an email with a survey in it, and I asked teachers to let me know, if we found something that was better, would you like to try it out? And so there was an overwhelming feedback, yes. Now, did they think we were going to try it out this quickly? But, but they did say they would like to look at other programs that might be more appropriate and have more of a impact on kids. So that's, that's where we're at.
Good.
The other thing I want to mention is that it is aligned to the curriculum apps, which are brand new. So that's pretty awesome, that it actually is going to be working in parallel with the learning that they're doing in the classroom. So we're hoping that it won't feel like an addition, but as sort of something that can really help with the actual curriculum as it's been designed to be rolled out.
Any other questions or comments? Yes?
Just one more comment. I, I think the rollout and the whole process for getting this grant has been a team effort. This is a very competitive grant, and they were actually looking for districts like ours, that were looking to make substantial changes in our curriculum, that we have diverse needs. And I think they're going to be as interested in our students' progress, because we were the district that they wanted. So we are very lucky to have it. And I was at the assembly on Friday, dancing with the kids, and there were a ton of children in there, and you could drop a pin when Gigi came in the room. And they were all attentive to just watching this on the screen with no words. It's almost magical. So their level of engagement without the words is, is amazing. So I think it's, you know, important to know that the teachers are working with Looney Math, with Jill, with Robin, as a team, to look at their math maps. And there are, they're looking at what is the best approach for their learners in front of them. And this is something that they are going to fit in. Good teamwork. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you very much to the administrators that, you know, put everything together, and the folks that put it together this summer, and to all the teachers, because I know there's been a lot thrown at you guys. But this is really cool. It seems an exciting way to learn, especially for our younger kids. Thank you. And thanks, Gigi. Don't trip on the way out. We don't need to.
So in, in, in an effort to let, share some more good news, I know I wasn't able to be at the last meeting, but Monique was able to share with you, and I wanted to actually give another shout out. We're working really hard in this district to find free resources. Monique and Mike Shaw and Tim Whiting wrote a grant, which she shared with you last week, last meeting. And I want to give a kudos to you and the team getting us $60,000 for new security cameras. So $60,000 for security cameras, we just got $50,000 for ST math. I'm pleased to let you know that.
Can I interrupt you for one second? But Mr. Thomas, could you just open that door, please? Somebody ends up being a potential, no, it's an open meeting issue. Sorry to interrupt, Dr. Gogan.
That's okay. I have other good news to share. We've been offered a donation from Mrs. Fells, and we're in the process of getting new band uniforms for our students. So we have a $25,000 donation that will be coming forward as soon as the band uniforms are selected. And that takes a little bit of time. And I have more good news. Through MAFRA, we've been working on, with Athletic Director Pronto and myself and Mr. Thomas, been working with them to talk to them about this program called the Real Madrid Program. And we are, we are going to be rolling it out. We're not sure if it's going to be basketballs, or soccer, or a combination, but that equates to about another $15,000 worth of funding for extracurricular activities. So we're in the process of getting that rolling. So all good news. Another good news is I received notification from Department of Education that our special education data does not show significant disproportionality by race or ethnicity. That is good news. And then I received more good news that, from Desi, that we were one of 125 school districts selected for the tiered focus monitoring. The good news is it's not this school year, and it's next school year. So we have time to prepare. Mrs. Barris and myself will be attending a training in November, because it will take us, much like our coordinated district review, probably a whole year to prepare for this. I want to let you know that every year, the superintendents in our surrounding towns, we sign a memorandum of understanding to help each other out, to provide post-traumatic stress supports, should any one of our districts have a crisis. So I, I think that's a wonderful thing, that we would be sharing resources in times of a crisis. And I'm not sure if you mentioned it at the last meeting, but I have been mentioning that we have Mr. Robert, who has offered to donate over $100,000 to start a college feeder program. One that is sort of mirrors the Immaculate Foundation. So I am going to Florida with Representative Jim McKenna, the end of September, to the Immaculate Foundation. I will be spending three days with them, learning about their programming, talking to their superintendent in Florida, learning about how this program starts in sixth grade and carries through high school, and how they are funding it, and all the mechanisms. So Joe and I are excited to go and learn about that, and I will be bringing information back to you. Our year has started off wonderfully. I know that was shared with you. We had a very, very busy summer, and the rollout was very successful. I've received so many positives from parents and students and staff about the tone this year, about the beginning. So I believe we're really off to a wonderful start, where two things are important, that everybody feels like they have a voice. And we are really asking people to share concerns and be a part of the solution. So that sort of is taking a life of its own. And as you can see, I, I think with our teachers here tonight, people are stepping up in, in new ways, and that's really exciting to see. We started our year off with a wonderful speaker at our opening day. We had Chad Hyman. Chad is coming back in October for a community presentation, and will be working with our kids. We also made sure that we started the year off with safety training. We reviewed our Alice protocols and procedures. Officer Tim Whiting and Officer Ela came to each one of our staff meetings on September 3rd to go over Alice. We've held our first district safety meeting. Today, we actually did our building walkthroughs with the Chief of Fire and Officer Whiting. And we reviewed our crisis plans and our multi-hazardous plans. The instructional strategies, AKA strategic plan for our district, has been working very well for the last three years. That has been tweaked, and you approved it at the last meeting. With that, our district leadership team has also met and talked a lot about the implementation of action plans in, in each of the buildings. And we've kind of come up with some non-negotiables, in terms of what all administrators will be focusing on in the buildings. And here's just a couple. Well-designed lesson plans, meeting our students' diverse needs, using quality feed, using student data and giving quality feedback, and monitoring and improving attendance, and really creating more family-friendly schools. Very easy for parents to come and feel welcome at an elementary school, not so much at a middle school and high school, but we're really stressing that need to reach out to all families, to make sure that they, they feel supported and heard. And lastly, almost lastly, in my report, I have shared my superintendent goals, which I'd like you to take a look at and approve, which are aligned to all of what we've been doing in the district, our instructional strategies. And after that, I have a personnel update for you.
Any questions or comments related to the goals that Dr. Gogan has presented to us for this upcoming school year? Let me just say that, you know, I think it aligns well with the overall, obviously, the goal of the district, as well as the strategic plan that's been put together. And I was, I think they're reasonable, because obviously, whenever you're establishing goals for anyone, if they're not achievable, or not focused on what the ultimate outcome is, then it's useless. So that was my own personal opinion. Any other questions or comments related to Dr. Gogan's goals? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the goals as presented.
So moved. Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Yes.
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 And finally, in my report, I went backwards tonight, just like you do a couple of personnel. We have received the resignation from Megan Prince and Hillary Sturgis, and we have some new hires. Siggy Frido Jarra as our Bartlett High School foreign language teacher. Kelsey Upstrom as our grade six teacher at the middle school. Donna Smith as a district Coda. And we've hired Deborah Zablocky as the interim dean at Park Avenue Elementary School for this year. And I would like to share that we have received Tony Kazinsky's retirement as of December 31st this year, and I want to publicly thank him, which I will probably do again in December, for thirty-three and a half years of dedicated service to Webster. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Dr. Gogan? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda is the business manager report. Good evening, Mrs. Perandale.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. We're going to continue on, well, I guess my news started out bad, then it got good, and then it went back to a little bad. So I don't know how you want to rate that on the, it was kind of a scale. I received notification from our head custodian at the high school a week ago, that they were inspecting our boilers, and our number one boiler failed. And we, we've been hanging on by a thread. We know that. We've been piecemealing those together for some time. Unfortunately, this repair was going to be a real big ticket, because the whole top of the boiler that connects to all the 22 sections or nipples, that they call them, all the way down, is leaking. So that would have been a major. So we've had to shut that boiler down. So we do have other boilers that we can run off of, but we usually switch, so they're not working so hard. So as I was digesting that information, I was about ready to reach out to the town administrator, because I knew we had a company come out, because Webster is a green community, and they had, I reported to you that in the spring, they were coming out and taking a look at our boilers. It just so happened, I had a meeting with Mr. Willison, and he informed me that day, oh, I wanted to tell you, we received the grant for the boiler. So I believe it was Wednesday, I had bad news. Thursday, I had very good news. So I'm like, that's excellent, because that was a $100,000 grant to replace the boiler. At the time, the company, we didn't know the total scope of the work. They, they knew the grant was $100,000, they were assessing the project. So Doug told me that he was going to reach back out to the company, get the final proposal, and see where to go from there. So he reached out to me Monday and said, well, now I've got some bad news. I said, okay. The project that they're projecting for the replacement of the boiler is $153,000. So we have to come up with $53,000 somewhere. So we are, we've had a couple discussions of where that $53,000 can come from. We're continuing them, so I don't want to, I think it's an opportunity that we shouldn't miss. You know, it's $100,000 to the community for boilers that we know, you know, even if we're looking at a project for the high school, we're still talking, that's years down the road. That's not going to happen tomorrow, so I don't want to see this pass. So I'm working with him to find alternative funding for that $53,000. In addition to the 53, we knew that we were going to have to, the school department was going to have to pay for the cost to remove the boiler, because what they do is they cut up the boiler and remove that. So at the time, that estimate was about $10,000, which I'm confident we can, you know, take So at the time, that estimate was about $10,000, which I'm confident we can, you know, take care of in our budget. But the $53,000 is a different, different thing. So I'll continue to keep you updated. We are looking at that. I've had a couple ideas, and he's actually liked my ideas, so we just got to, I don't want to say them out loud until we're all on the same page with that, but we're working on that. So hopefully...
Has the warrant closed?
The warrant article's closed yesterday, I believe.
It did?
Yes. Yep. Yep. So he has also, in that meeting with him, I gave him, I reported to you last time at the school committee about the foster care transportation. So he has that, and he will be putting it on the fall town meeting to enter into an MOU so we can get reimbursed for transportation, up to 25% for our foster care transportation. So I'll keep you informed on that. I'm hoping that we can, you know, in the scheme of things, I think overall, we should be able to find $53,000 somewhere to move that project along. The second item I have is our new timekeeping system, Cronos. You know, I've reported over the summer that we've been working really hard implementing a couple of new systems. So we did go live with the system on the start of school. We're having our ups and downs with it. Like any new system, it's a learning curve. You know, staff have been, I've got to say, great. They've been awesome, working through the problems, working through the system. I, you know, we've had many conversations about how to log in, what does it mean to do this, how do we report it for something for a teacher, and it's just learning how to use the system on a daily basis. So they're doing a fantastic job. I'm continuing weekly meetings with Cronos to update any little things that come along, and I just wanted to publicly thank them, thank the staff, because without their feedback, I don't know what's working and what's not working. We can take a look at the system, but until you actually get in there and start using it, we're using it on a very small scale in the summer. There's not a ton of people working as far as staff, so having everybody back and using the system and seeing those little tweaks that we need to make, and what's working and what's not working, different views that people see. So their feedback is appreciated. You know, we've been busy with calls and walking people through things, but, you know, the feedback, once they feel comfortable with the system, is, oh, this is easier, I like this better. They have, they own their time a little bit more than the other systems. So, you know, the pushback has been from us that, you know, you know the hours yet you're working, you know the times, you're responsible for your punches, you're responsible for any changes that need to be requested. So it's really put the ownership on, on the employee to make sure their time is accurate on a, on a weekly basis, that we're not chasing things down in the business office for payroll. So I think it's, it's gone well. So I just want to thank everybody that's using it, and for their feedback, and for their patience as we roll out of new systems. So I appreciate that. And the last item is our closeout for FY '19. You saw the budget at the last meeting. We are continuing to closeout, working on grants, starting to work on final reports and getting all those things done. We are in the thick of it. We will be starting to work on our end-of-year report. That is typically due on September 30th. Last year, we did not need to file an extension. I'm not sure if I'm going to be that lucky this year. We've been, I know the accountant's office downtown has been a bit short-staffed. They've had some people out sick, so he's been juggling multiple duties down there, and it's just been busy all around with the new system. So we've been in contact. If we need an extension, it will be a small extension. It's not going to go too long. We're both kind of, I don't know what the word is, maybe a little anal when it comes to submitting things on time, as we work through the process. So it's kind of a pet peeve of both of ours, so we're in constant contact, but what, I said, don't stress, we have time, we'll make it work. We want, I want it to be accurate. I don't want it to be rushed. That's more important to me. But we will continue, and I will bring that, all that information forward once it's complete. Is there any questions?
Any questions or comments for Mrs. Perangeli? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the principal report, Fran Thomas Bartlett High School. Let me, on behalf of the committee, Mr. Thomas, welcome you to your first official school committee meeting. I know you were introduced to us, I believe, was it your second day? Or your second week? Yeah. But again, welcome to, to the school district, and we look forward to your reports tonight and moving forward.
Thank you very much. First thing I want to talk about is our AP test results, and I think what's included in your packet is a two-year span. First thing that I want to point out is that there were 155 tests taken. That doesn't mean 155 students took those, so that's one big difference. But I wanted to bring this to this committee, because I think the results are not good. And I think there's a combination of things that kind of led to these results that are, I don't know if they're necessarily in conflict, but it's kind of a mishmash. So I think a few years ago, MEMZI was kind of pushing more kids to take AP exams and AP classes, regardless of prerequisites or whatever. And they were coming at it from a good place in, in terms of equity and access and things like that. That's one factor. Another factor is some of our tracks, like Nichols, you have to take two AP classes, or you have to take an AP class in a class at Nichols. Some of our kids' schedules don't allow them to take a class at Nichols. So a student may be interested in AP chemistry, but they're going to take an AP English class too, so they can have the two APs. So when it comes time to take the test, they might concentrate on chemistry, but English is like, I just took it to take it. We also have senior privilege. If you take two AP classes, you get a study. If you get a study in the morning, you get to come in late, and you have in the afternoon. So we kind of have a bunch of different motives for taking AP classes. We also have a small staff, so there may be a kid who, a student who is really interested in music and would love to take an AP music theory class, but there might be three kids in that class. So if we take the teacher out of the schedule to teach three kids, the other classes are going up to 50 students in there. So there's a lot of things that are kind of at play there. And I think if we, if we're looking at it from the standpoint of college credits, there's very few kids that are getting college credits out of this. If we're looking at it from the standpoint of access and equity, we might be better served trying to pursue more of a dual enrollment situation with Nichols and Quinn Sieger or something like that than this. So we really kind of need to decide philosophically, are we going to narrow our focus for AP and have some sort of prerequisite guideline course and kind of limit the number of courses that we offer? And I don't really have a preference, but I think that clearly, this result is not what anyone is looking for. And I know there's, there's a thought that Bartlett High is, is kind of enhanced by saying, we offer so many AP classes. Well, we can offer a lot of classes, but if kids aren't passing them, it doesn't really do much good. So that's why I, it's kind of like a debate that we want to do. I know that there are, like, the PSAT is considered a good indicator of whether a student is ready for an AP level class, but only 30 or 40 kids take PSATs. So is that something where, like, we offset the cost of AP classes, do you want to offset the cost of PSATs? Like, some schools, everyone takes a PSAT, and the school pays for it, and they do it in school. So that might be one, one way that we can go. But I think we're, we're just kind of like stuck with a lot of different motives and a lot of different philosophies that we need to kind of have some clarity around as we move forward. So that's one of the things that I, why I wanted to not only discuss the results, but bring it forward to this committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas, can you help us understand? Can you just give us a quick overview on what these scores mean and what the spreadsheet means for all of us and for those listening?
Sure. Okay. So to, to get college credit, you want to get a five, four or five. Some colleges will take like a three. The ones and twos are the lowest scores.
Okay.
So if we, if we look, you know, at, you know, the, kind of, the aggregate, we saw that 2019, 155 AP tests were taken. Of that, only six got a level five.
Right.
All right? And only 10 got a level four. All right? So 52 got a, scored a one, and 62 scored a two. So those are the lowest, those are the bottom level, you know, that's the lowest that you can get. So that would be like, no credits, nothing for those kids.
Is it a passing grade for high school purposes, but doesn't translate?
It doesn't, it doesn't translate into like a passing grade.
Okay.
So the, the other thing that we find is, if we were looking at this logically, a student who took an AP class that got a one should probably be failing that AP class in the school, which is not what, what occurs. Most of our kids who take AP classes are, are like our honor roll students. So there's not necessarily a correlation between what we're seeing on AP test results and what we see in the classroom.
So, so what happens is, during the year, you get graded as, you know, on tests and quizzes and homework. So there's your grade for the quarter and then ultimately the year, and then at the end of the school year, you take the AP exam. So there are two separate grading systems. There's the school grading system that provides the classroom grade, and then each student, is it, is it a requirement? I believe it is.
In AP class, yes.
So you're required to take the AP exam, and this is indicating what the, what the scores are for that AP exam. So aside from getting out of the final, which I think is the biggest benefit that a lot of kids look at for taking the AP exam, if you don't get a four or a five, most likely you won't get the college credit. And actually, Mr. Thomas mentioned a lot of the kind of frustrations I've gone through as a parent over the last seven or eight years, because most of our children have done extremely well in the course.
Yeah.
And I, I don't want to embarrass any of them in public, but have not done extremely well on the testing, and that could be standardized testing.
Right.
Stress. There is a significant disconnect in my mind that you've identified as well.
Yeah.
With how can we have so many kids doing so well in the class.
Right.
Yet performing so poorly on the standardized college board test.
Right. And I, again, I think the motivations for students to take AP classes plays into that.
Right.
So if you have to take two AP exams, and you're like planning on going to college for like math, you might say, I'm going to take this AP math, but I need another one, so my friend's taking this, I'll, I'll take that.
I'll take AP history, even though I don't like history.
Yeah, even though I, I have no intention, I'm not interested, because I have to take it. And in fact, you actually, you don't have to take an AP class to actually take an AP exam.
Oh, really?
You can do that. I, I don't think many of our students do, but I think another data point that might be interesting is the, the six kids who got a five, did they actually receive college credit for, for getting that five? Because again, if we're using this as a way to like defray college costs ultimately, and they're not taking advantage of it, we might be better served by doing that dual enrollment so that kids are taking one or two classes. And I know that there is training opportunities where teachers can get qualified to teach the college course at Bartlett High, so that would alleviate some of the transportation problems and things like that. But it all plays into GPAs, because certain classes are weighted more, so that's another reason why someone wants to take an AP class, because I want to be valedictorian, and I know that if I do this, the courses are weighted more, which doesn't benefit them in college at all, because every high school weighs things differently, so colleges kind of, you know, try to even that out themselves. So that's what I mean. It's not, it's not really clear to me, well, and I met with the IOT today in, in talking to people and students individually, like, if we have an actual track that does what we think AP classes should do.
And you are probably aware of this, every college will take the GPA and they'll create their own.
Their own GPA, yes.
Right. And so, I know, to your point, there was a big push. We received a very large grant, I think Mr. McCarrick can probably remember, years ago, we received a very large grant to train the teachers and implement this, this AP system that we currently have. And that was, you know, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but at the time, and I don't know if this is still true, it was almost considered, if you didn't have AP courses on your transcript, several colleges and/or majors within those colleges wouldn't even consider you. And I'm not even sure if that's still, but it, as you've indicated, it's, there's a lot to it.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of data to try to assess what is in the best interest of each individual student.
And also because we're relatively small staff, staff size.
Right.
What we can provide at that level that's going to benefit them ultimately.
To your point, if you have, if you have to offer an AP Calc as an example, and you only have eight students in that class, well, that teacher slot is now taken, and I'll, you know, an Algebra I or a college-level math.
Right.
May have 30 children, because you only have four or five math teachers.
Right.
To put into those slots.
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly kind of like the conundrum that we're, that we're looking at to try and see, you know, and you, ultimately, you'd like to offer those specialty APs for the kids, that might be the hook for that kid, a graphic arts or something like that, but you know that that's probably not going to be practical to do. So that's why I think we need to decide, are we going to have a narrow track? Are we going to try to focus on like a dual enrollment opportunities, things like that?
Any other questions or comments related to everybody's favorite topic of AP exams?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one other question, and forgive me, because...
No, that's okay.
...learning about this as we go here. Has there been any looking at sort of what the rigor of these classes looks like compared to the rigor of the exam? Is there a disconnect there between, you know, the kids are scoring well, maybe the standards are different in the classroom than on the exam?
I, I think the teachers who teach AP have to do like at least a week-long training in terms of what they have to offer, and, and the course load and the prerequisites, and some of the reading are pretty well prescribed.
Mm-hmm.
But again, I think it's, it's similar to MCAST, like, what is your interest, what's your motivation for, for taking the exam?
Sure.
Again, just as a parent, I would answer that question, yes.
Yes, there's a disconnect between rigor and the question.
Not, not across the board, but my, my experience has been that there are certain AP teachers that are either sometimes just going so fast because they have to get through all of this content by, let's say, the middle of May, whenever the test date is, or the level of instruction in that particular class may not be where it should be, and is that a reflection of some of these scores?
Sorry to keep asking questions, but are students testing into AP?
No, there isn't. That's what I'm saying, there's not. We don't have necessarily prerequisites for, like, there's a track that you have to take in a sequence of math, for, for example, but we also, there's sometimes, due to staffing issues, you may have to take an AP physics and AP trig the same quarter, which is not ideal either.
Because one requirement, for instance, for the Nichols Honors Academy, as I think Mr. Thomas alluded to, is you have to take two AP courses. So when you have a small school with a small staff, and you, you know, you're trying to make sure that that student has the two courses, the two APs, and that student may want to take, let's say, AP Calc and AP English, but the English doesn't fit into their schedule, so now they're required to take AP History, and they may not like History. So the, you know, that's some of, again, that's not the norm.
There's a bunch of different things that play into it, but I think we just need some clarity of purpose so that we can either narrow it down or try to expand one in the other.
I wonder if there's more data that we could collect in order to identify whether it's a motivational issue or a rigor issue, or, you know, how we can best remedy that? I don't know.
And I, I think frankly, sometimes kids are recommended to put in AP classes because they're good kids.
But what I will say is, I do appreciate Mr. Thomas, literally in his first meeting to us, coming to us with not necessarily the most positive topic.
Yeah.
But the reality, and, you know, take, beginning the discussion now, early in the school year, so that whatever necessary changes or appropriate changes may have to occur, they can be done, you know, looking at the next school year. So I do appreciate you, you looking at this and, and working on it early on in the school year.
Yeah. Well, again, I think it's a philosophical thing for the district as a whole, so that's why I wanted to bring it up.
I, I just want to point out that these scores have a similar pattern than the previous year. This isn't new news. And what we're doing here, and whether it's looking at AP scores or looking at the discrepancy between MCAST results and honor roll numbers, it's really similar, a similar situation. We're taking a deeper dive into our programming. We're looking at results. We're looking at... We're looking at data with a new lens. So I also appreciate your bringing this up. We're not looking to point fingers, but I call it peeling the onion, peeling the onion to figure out what we really, what next steps need. And I know when the coordinated review results come out, they may talk a little bit about some of these things in terms of equitable access and how we're selecting what students for what programs. So we, as a district, are going to be required to have these kind of conversations together with our teachers to figure out. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions or comments related to the AP topic? Thanks.
Okay. And we instituted a new breakfast program this year, Breakfast After Bell. I met over the summer with our food manager and a liaison from the state to get all the requirements down. So it's a significant difference for the students in that before they used to come into the cafeteria, sit down and eat, they had bell rang at like 7:15 to say, get up and get ready for class. So now students are coming in, it's kind of a grab and go. So they, when they come in, something, they go into their first period class with their breakfast. So that's a significant difference, but we had to meet the guidelines, the requirements of doing it. So we're having, I would say, some mixed results, like I'm not sure, like there's a bag now that you bring. You have to take like a fruit or a milk and like different items. So a lot of students, like I want the granola bar, I don't want this. So in some cases, they don't want to take the whole bag. So we're trying to figure out how we best, because on the one hand, you'll have another kid sitting there going, I'll take it, I'll take it, rather than, you know, waste it. So we're trying to figure out kind of like, is it the bag that cuts down? So it varies from day to day, how many kids actually take part in it. But then inevitably, by like 7:30, kids are kind of like, Ms. Thomas, I'm starving. Trying to find, you know, like where all those granola bars that they threw away, they came in. But we have it set up in the cabin, they come in and we have a separate station for kids who come in tardy. So they all, you know, have the opportunity to eat breakfast. So it's going, we're going to try to, as we streamline this and make sure we have the traffic going, we're going to see if we can kind of introduce some of the hot breakfast stuff as part of that. And that may also be an incentive for students to arrive not tardy so that if we only have so many egg sausage sandwiches, you have to be here by this time or otherwise you get the cereal and cheese sticks. So we're working, we're working on that and try to see if we can do that. But it's going well so far.
Good.
All right. And the last thing, I had assemblies with each class rather than the whole school because I thought message for seniors is different than for freshmen or whatever. And one of the things that we emphasized, and the teachers emphasize this in their win team meetings, as well as attendance and tardiness. And so I can say that right now, our year-to-date attendance is about 94%.
Good.
So we're, again, we're trying to look at data. I know we're going to be challenged as the weather comes when we have walkers and I know like a rainy day, it'll probably dip. But I'd much rather be sitting at 94% when we have those dips than, you know, to be low now. And obviously, I wasn't here before, but some of the teachers are like, this was in the 70s and low 80%, you know, at this time last year. So to be up in the low 90% now is good. So we're just trying to, again, be visible, be accessible to kids, let them know that we care about them and that we want them here and, you know, like that's a non-negotiable. Like I told them at each assembly, I'll talk to you about anything, but you're not here and you're not here on time, I'm going to be talking to you.
Any questions or comments from the members? Let me just say that, you know, I have the fortunate experience of talking to a lot of staff members and kids. And so far, the feedback I've personally received has been very positive with your leadership and the tone of the building. And Dr. Gogan mentioned the tone across the district. So I know it was very, very busy for you coming in later, you know, middle of July, having one of your administrators resign soon after that, implementing these easy concepts like breakfast for teenagers who are not fickle at all.
Right.
But I just want to thank you for your efforts and the positive mood that I've been told is existing in the building. So thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on with our agenda, next item on the agenda is the student update. Logan Peranto, and Logan, let me also thank you on behalf of the committee for volunteering as our student rep and joining us this year. And I personally think your role actually is a very important role. Not only do you update us on activities and events that are going on, but every once in a while, you notice probably the annoying chair might ask you a question without embarrassing you. But I do want you to know from the beginning, if at any time you have any questions or comments, please absolutely feel free.
Okay.
To.
Thank you.
Ask a question, make a comment. You are certainly a very important part of this committee, so welcome.
All right, thank you. I'd like to start off with talking about the incoming freshmen and how they have been met with open arms from sophomores all the way to seniors and also the faculty. Next, the October SAT deadline to sign up was September 6th, so that has been, it's cut off, it's done. Students at Bartlett have been introduced to our new principal, Mr. Thomas, and our new assistant principal, Mrs. Kuzlin. They're both doing great jobs so far. Show choir has started and are looking to make an impact on Bartlett students this year. The yearbook club has already began brainstorming themes and ideas for this year's yearbook. I'm a part of it and it's going very well so far. We're talking about themes like maybe putting all of our handprints, individually handprints in the yearbook so we can get everyone in the year, like everyone in our class involved. With athletics, the synapse are now over for the fall season and teams are working very hard. I've noticed all the practices, not a lot of participation this year, but people are still working very hard. The athletic chemical health meeting took place on September 3rd, which included guest speakers Officer Shaw from the police, Captain Marjorie Rouski from the Webster EMS, and Abigail Westerland from the district attorney office, whom spoke about drug abuse, hazing, and concussion awareness. Also, rules and coaches expectations were also discussed at the meeting. Boys and girls varsity and JV soccer teams played Tantasca and Oxbridge. Boys and girls cross-country teams ran their first meet of the season against Quaybog and Oxbridge, which was held at Quaybog. Football team played in a scrimmage against Quabin and showed great effort, only with 20 kids going out there and showing a lot of effort and everything. The volleyball team had matches versus Grafton, Bay Path, and Oxford. The golf team is also five games deep into the season. And lastly, I wanted to talk about, I know this was before school, but the freshman cookout. The student council, as well as members of the school committee contributed to the welcome freshman cookout on August 22nd.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Logan? And is there a game Friday night?
Saturday.
So it has been moved. No, that was originally scheduled, correct?
Yeah, that one was originally scheduled for them.
Since he mentioned so many sports, and I know it was in your newsletter, did you want to publicly comment on the triple E issue and what the district has put into place to help protect our staff and students?
As you know, we are in a high-risk area and there was some spraying in August, August 25th and 26th. Feed notification today that spraying is going to start again anywhere from tonight to an undetermined date. We are not having any activities from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And any game is going to be stopped or practice at 6:00 PM regardless of whether it's in the middle of the game. So we are adhering to that. Our athletic director has bug spray and has informed all parents. We talked about it at the chemical health night, a wonderful chemical. And we, my newsletter, I have put out a bunch of our families look up, a waiver, normally school notified, praying, but waiver clarified us, all the. Safe if the football games change, athletic director.
Thank you very much. And again, thank you, Logan.
All right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, under old business, we have our monthly report on fundraising applications. And again, just as a reminder, it is school committee policy that we just review publicly the fundraisers that are approved. We do not approve fundraisers, those are approved by the building principal and the superintendent. The Gridiron Club will be raising money once again, various functions, program ad books, meet raffles, alumni football jersey sale, as this is the 100th year of the program and the Thanksgiving Day game or just the Thanksgiving Day game? I know Mr. Peranto told us last.
Yeah.
Of the game, okay. Also, the middle school is doing a Meadow Farms fundraiser and Park Ave PTO will be selling Yankee candles. So again, thank you to all the groups and organizations that help raise money for our students. Continuing with the agenda, first item under new business is appoint school committee vice chair. Again, with the resignation of Mr. Schenover, he was the vice chair of the committee. So we do need to replace a new vice chair. And I will open it up to the members for any comments and/or nominations for vice chair.
Vice chair.
Ms. Napparata.
I nominate Kelly Siddiki for vice chair.
Second.
There is a nomination and a second. Are there any other, and somebody jumped in that second relatively quickly. Any other nominations from the members? Hearing none. Laurie, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, and Mrs. Siddiki, I think you will remember who made that nomination, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, I will.
And in case I forget, Laurie, now we have to put a new secretary appointment on the next agenda, as Mrs. Siddiki was our secretary. Next item on the agenda is appoint backup warrant signatory. Again, there, per Massachusetts law, we are allowed to have a warrant signed by a member of the committee, and then that warrant is presented to the entire committee at the next meeting in the event, especially in the summer when we only meet once a month. And Mr. Schenover was the backup warrant signatory, so I will entertain a motion to appoint one of the members. I think I believe I am the primary warrant signatory, so it would have to be someone other than myself. Mrs. Napparata.
I nominate Chill of Life to be the backup signatory.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any under discussion, I believe, for those other members, the lesson learned may be to speak first and nominate others. I tend to see a trend, but I don't want to make any accusations. Hearing no further discussion. Laurie, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is approval of out-of-state field trip Bartlett Show Choir to Warwick, Rhode Island. And it appears that Mr. Carney is asking for approval for the show choir to go to Warwick Is that, I didn't miss anything, correct?
Exactly.
Okay.
They are looking to partner with.
Oh.
And Warwick.
Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip for the show choir to Warwick, Rhode Island.
So moved. Oh, sorry. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is approval of fundraising organization, Park Avenue Elementary PTO. Again, the Park Ave PTO does amazing work, and I know many, many parents spend a lot of time raising funds, you know, for the students so that they can go on field trips and have a lot of extracurricular activities. These application has been submitted and signed off by the superintendent. Are there any questions or comments related to the application?
Comment. Park Avenue.
And I assume that would be in the library? So again, anybody who's watching that's not familiar with the school, it's easier if you go through the back entrance, which is on the second floor of the building, take a left and you're right at the library.
Have it set up like.
Hearing no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the Park Ave PTO as a fundraising organization.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of donation from Long Subaru. Did you want to present, Dr. Gogan?
We are thrilled. Long Subaru donates, are filled with backpacks, supplies are distributed, need them, they're there. There you.
Any questions or comments from the members? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the donation from Long Subaru as presented.
So moved.
There is a motion and a second, any further discussion? Again, on behalf of the committee, let me just reiterate the superintendent's thanks and tremendous gratitude to Long Subaru. I know they've been doing this for many, many years and they donate during the year as well. So thank you to Long Subaru here in town. Laurie, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of EOS Foundation Grant.
Wait, I'm telling. We talked about tonight, finally obtained. Good night.
It's very good night.
No, I believe she's using. Bless. It needs to be tracking. So just to sum it up, $5,000 for the EOS, $100,000 for the boiler, $1,000 for the green.
Are there any questions or comments from the members? And again, thank you to Ms. Nyland for reaching out and applying for the grant. I will entertain a motion to approve the EOS Foundation, or sorry, to accept the EOS Foundation Grant in the amount of $5,067.96.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Laurie, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Next item on the agenda is review transfer signing of bills, payroll, and vouchers. Next item on the agenda is review transfer signing of bills, payroll, and vouchers.
[inaudible]
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Siddiki.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Laurie, would you poll the committee, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you very much, everybody.